I had put on the agenda, and I think we all get these questions constantly. Anytime we approve something new that has multiple housing, multiple apartments, whatever, is, but is there water for it? And yes, we know we have enough water out here to do what we're doing. But how does that tie into the whole state? Because not only are we doing it here, but they're doing it in Buckeye and Glendale and Peoria and everywhere, the whole valley. So cumulatively, what does it do? And then I think just in the last few years, we've seen the trend going away from homes to rental homes and apartments. And apartments are one thing, but homes that are going to be only rented with no hope of ever buying them. And you're wondering, why are they doing that? And we understand some people can't afford, you know, the down payment on a house. But then you hear about the 100-year assured water source and that a lot of people are speculating that they're going this way so that they don't have to comply with the 100-year water source. And does that, how is that going to add up? What if we do that for five, 10, 20 years and we just blanket the whole valley with rental homes? Does that make it right or not? So I would want to get to, you know, what's true, what's not. And this will help us make decisions going forward. So Lonnie Frost.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's an honor to be able to talk to you today. And I appreciate the wonderful segue into talking about this. And I thought I would spend just maybe 30 seconds talking about what my research kind of turned up about the build-to-rent, other, and other names that I found out are called low-density multifamily or horizontal apartments, which I thought are interesting descriptors about this. And the, the demand has actually risen kind of as a result of COVID because people are finding that they can work more and more from home, but don't like the captivity of being in a multi-story apartment and being stuck in what is now their home office in an apartment-type setting. And so there's a demand there for more room, more privacy for people who are working from their home. The job market uncertainty is driving this a little bit too. Lifestyle, where you can live at a place that's nice, kind of has a single-family feel, but maintenance-free, you can walk away from and, and be a little more, not tied to your belongings. And plus, for the investor side, there's much lower tenant turnover in these developments. There's currently, in the state of Arizona, approximately 11,000 units of this nature. In, in our county, there are currently about 460 units in process, being built and going through that process. And Brent was kind enough to come over in case you have any questions about that process and what's happening here to give you some more of the details on that. When we look at the build-to-own versus assured water supply, we need to understand that if one of these build or rent-to-own developments happens within, in a community that has a designation of assured water supply, then they come with, when they come within their assured water supply rules, and they have to prove as they go through this designation process that they have enough water for that development. If it's standalone and they're going to drill their own wells, have their own wastewater treatment program, then they might be able to skirt the rules. But even Tom Bouchotsky, who is the Director of Department of Water Resources, is quoted as saying, "The legal framework was put together to regulate specific activities." I don't view legally any activities that fall outside of that framework as either skirting the law or as a loophole. With that, there is some work afoot right now under House Bill 2445 sponsored by Representative Gail Griffin, who chairs the Natural Resources Water and Energy Committee, to make some changes in ARS 32, particularly with subdivision and what subdivisions mean. And one of the things that are proposed to be added to that is the language, "which includes six or more detached, single residential homes." So that would eliminate what is seen as a bit of a loophole there. And then there's some, there's some currently written under those subdivision rules, an area there that says, "does not include." One of those currently says, "leasing offerings of one year or less." This proposed House Bill 2445 would strike that. So that's the way that they're, they're, the, our legislators are looking at dealing with this trend and dealing with long-term assured water supply. And I'm, and you have to recall, and we have developments that are currently in this that we sanction called like mobile home parks, things of that nature. They are not required to prove an assured water supply. Again, unless they're within an area of designated assured supply within a community or water provider, then they have to prove that as part of their ongoing designation process, which is typically done about every 10 years. So that's kind of the quick and dirty, and I hope that kind of addressed what you were looking for, but if not, happy to field questions.
Yeah. And we want to hear from Steve Miller, too, because he sits on several water boards as well, and I think he's going to.
And I just, if I, if I may, kind of explain that the certificate of assured water is not water law. It's, was designed for consumer protection. It has, in other words, their, the idea was the state wanted to ensure somebody that bought a home would have water for 100 years. That's, and, and that's why, I'm certainly not an attorney or anything, I don't know that forcing rentals into certificates of assured water is, that's not really protecting the consumer as a whole, the way, the, the way that statute was created and why it was created. So, I don't know. And there's, there's a lot of different moving parts to this thing. I really, myself, think that any of these, any of these developments, whether they're in a designation or not in a designation, and I would say it should apply to high-rise, high-rise apartments or anything, should probably enroll or be in part of a replenishment program, someplace where they do kind of cover their use through, through recharge. You can get way down into the weeds and all that, but just remember, the reason that the certificate of assured water came about had little to do with the water problems. It was designed to give consumer protection when they bought a home. And, and I mean, it goes way back. I can't remember what year it was, 80, 1980, 82, someplace in there is when they finally put that in place. So I just wanted to get that clarity out there because a lot of people think it's water law, and it is not.
If it was law, then that whole Rio Verde situation would have not happened, correct?
You, you could argue that, yes.
Because they would have not even been allowed to build up there.
Right. So, and how they subdivide, that's why you get some of this wildcat developments that end up on like one well for four or five different units. There's no regulation to that. So there's a, you know, we have a lot of gaps in our, in our, how we've structured the water policies in Arizona that probably need to be looked at. I don't know. Lonnie, I don't know, did I get any of that right or wrong or?
Chairman Surti, Mr. Miller, yes, very good points and exactly on topic. The other thing we shouldn't forget as well is subdivisions also apply out to industrial developments as well. If you subdivide, and these are going to be industrial lots, and you do six or more, then those fall within that as well.
That's correct.
Surely someone else wants to weigh in on this, because we all get these questions right whenever we're doing town halls. Just me, I guess.
Okay.
Actually.
Yeah.
No, and I guess to the other, you know, like for instance, in Santan Valley, we have Epcor, which is one of the largest suppliers of water and sewer probably in the state, beside, next to some of our municipalities, but private utility. They, they are the ones that actually issue or are responsible for that 100-year water supply. Is that correct?
If they're, if the user is within their area of service, within their certificated area, yes, they are.
Okay. And are most of our, our private utilities, are they responsible for that as well? Are they the ones that, or did they have that same ability that Epcor does?
They have the same requirements.
Okay.
Currently, within Pinal County, there are designated designation of assured supply areas in Florence, the Epcor area up north, Eloy and Global Water in Maricopa, and then the Casa Grande area, which comes under Arizona Water Company. So those are areas that have actually designations of assured supply. And that originally started out with, under the, under the code, they were basically grandfathered into that until 1997 because they, they each had allocations of central Arizona project water. After 97, then about on a 10-year interval, they have to reprove that they have water for what they're currently serving to 100 years and what they're projected to serve for the next 10 years to 100 years.
Okay. So, and that's a lot there in the Santan Valley, and I would imagine in Maricopa as well, what's happening over in the city of Maricopa. The other probably thing that I'd like you to touch on is what Supervisor Miller alluded to was the recharge of many of these subdivisions and things of that nature. I mean, for years, that's one thing that wasn't really effectively utilized in the Santan Valley area specifically because of the provider at that time wasn't taking advantage of that. But can you talk a little bit about the recharge itself and how imperative and important that is because we're talking about water conservation as well, in my opinion? So if you could take a few minutes and talk about that.
Sure. Chairman Sherby, Chairman Surti, and Supervisor Goodman, recharge is, is becoming more and more of an important element in proving assured water supply. What Epcor is currently doing is they are using recharge wells to put reclaimed water back into the ground, and they are doing in-lu recharge with a magma irrigation district where they basically provide them with a water supply so that they don't have to pump groundwater at the magma irrigation district, and they get recharge credits by doing this, which then they basically put in that water bank account and they can pull back out as, as a water supply that is not officially labeled groundwater. And this is happening kind of all over the, the area, and, and people are becoming more and more cognizant of this. Probably just, some of you probably understand it, in the early days of development to, to our north, that the, many of the valley municipalities decided that the, the most expedient way to deal with wastewater was to build the 91st Avenue wastewater treatment plant and send all their wastewater there, treat it, and put it back in the Salt River. And now they're all thinking that was one of the biggest mistakes they ever made because that water supply is headed out the west end of the valley. Now, they're getting some beneficial use from it by going to Palaver Nuclear Plant, but many of them are building interceptor wastewater plants to pull, to catch that water that's not guaranteed to go to 91st Avenue, Avenue, excuse me, and use it themselves to put back in the ground or to supplement their, or supplant potable water use for plants and growing and other things like that. So yeah, it's the recharge of wastewater because we can treat it really almost at drinkable level now, put it back in the ground, let nature do some more cleaning, and then pump it back out. Kind of indirect reuse of wastewater. So yeah, it's, it's huge. It's, it's something that people are doing more and more of. Good point.
Steve.
Yeah, real quick, just for another example, in the Casa Grande area, at one time, 66% of the irrigation, flood irrigation by the farmers down there was cap water. But it wasn't the farmer's water, it was water companies that were sending it down and giving, or selling it to the farmers to put it in the ground so they could repump it later. That's one of the things that's kept that aquifer pretty stable for a long time. Now there is no more water, very little water, there's a little bit will come down this year and be recharged through a program, Arizona Water and somebody else has some coming down. But the point is, the recharge is what we've been using, that cap water in our county for, for, for years, and putting it back into the aquifer. That's gone away, and to mitigate the loss of that, because that was all supposed to happen in 2030 and 2031, they were going to lose that ability. But because of the drought contingency plan and the drought, they had to move it to 2021, and so the water's gone away. So there's 10 years there, and when they've, what they've done is to mitigate the farmers' losses is to allow them to drill more wells. Good, bad, or otherwise, that is the scenario. But back to Supervisor Goodman's point, we really need to be aggressively and plan on recharging every drop of water that we use that comes through, which is the reason I want to see more regional-type sewer solutions throughout the county and, and with the cities and towns, and make sure that we really take advantage of recharging those, because as Lonnie said, they, you can clean that water to where it's drinkable, so we ought to be able to clean it and put it back in the ground.
So this is a.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that we kind of stay on topic. This, the agenda item relates to residential rental lease properties and not the broader county water issues as a whole. So if we can make sure that we're staying focused on the agenda item.
I was getting ready to just make it even broader, but.
[laughter]
Yeah. We were talking about recharge, and I was going to.
Tie it to a house.
Or an apartment.
Yeah. I was going to talk about how I hate to even say the C-word, but California is letting all the river water just go out in the oceans, and we're letting the salt and the Gila go down, you know? But I don't think you can legally divert waterways like that once it's in there.
It's going through an apartment complex.
Okay.
Well, to the, to this point, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, you know, regarding residential rental and lease properties, rather than the certificate, I think those, those properties should participate in a recharge program. That affluent that comes out of those facilities can be quantified and, and sent to a treatment plant, and then that treatment plant will clean it and verify that they've recharged it. That is where I, I see, that's low-hanging fruit, in my opinion. So I think that that's, that's really where we need to go with the residential side of things.
But as for the, the 100-year assured supply, there is no law, just like we were all, remember, just a few years ago, we all assumed that there was a dark sky ordinance, and we found out that there really wasn't. It's just, there really should be, and we ought to follow that. So that's kind of the same vein that we're, that we're operating on here, so.
Again, that assured water, certificate of assured water is tied to subdividing properties and not, and it's consumer protection. It's saying if you buy a house, you have 100, you're there in a sense guaranteed that you'll have water for 100 years.
Yeah.
My house was built in 1941, so I'm about out of time.
So we may not revisit this. County Attorney Volkmer, do you have anything to add on this? I just, if so.
Not by our expertise.
Okay. Kevin Kavino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the folks in Thunderbird Farms are concerned that their water table is already low, and we're considering approving a project, a rental project, that may put their water at risk. Well, they are in individual plots of property, they did not receive 100-years guaranteed certificate from anybody. So how, how, what's the best way to address that?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavino, are they within, I'm not familiar specifically with that development. Are they with, are they being provided water by a private water company, or are they standalone?
By my understanding, they're on wells, but the, but then, then the water company will tap into that same aquifer with a large residential rental that doesn't have the 100-year certificates, because rent, rental properties don't need that, as I understand it. So they're going to be sticking their straw in the same cup and jeopardizing potentially water for the people who already live there.
Okay. Okay, Brent, just whispered in my ear that Global Water is the provider for that rental, that potential rental development. And I, I think your concern is valid. Whenever you put a straw in the ground, there will be an impact. By Arizona state law, when you do put a, a new well in the ground, you have to deal with the impacts of, of wells that you have an impact on within the area of influence. So that will be taken into consideration. But yes, you're absolutely right. It, there is a limit, there's a finite amount of water, and there will be impacts. And to Supervisor Miller's comment, we should try to deal with those impacts as much as possible by perhaps looking at requiring that, one, they be part of CAGRID so that water is put back into the ground, and, two, that we make most efficient use of the reclaimed water to put it back in the ground as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller first.
And to the, Global Water will be, it's their determination whether they have enough water. They'll issue a, a will-serv letter. And I, I mean, I, I totally get it. Everybody's right. Once you stick a straw in the ground, you're going to be dropping the aquifer by somebody else. But in Global's case, they could be moving that water clear from the north side of their, their CCNN and sending it south. So there's, you know, it might not be the same spot, so. But that all has to be done by the water provider, and the water provider, again, as Lonnie said, they have to be able to prove to the Department of Water Resources that they do have enough water to supply this project with, and they'll do that with a will-serv letter. And that they'll, they'll do their homework first before they issue that will-serv letter.
Mike Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to, to your point, Lonnie, what you said earlier, and to Supervisor Miller's, I think that's something that we ought to be looking at as a board, that we require the, the part of reclaiming, you know, if we're going to really be serious about a lot of our water issues and things of that nature, I think this board ought to look at the possibility of setting the guidelines that those waters, when, when an apartment complex or a larger development comes into these areas, there is a requirement that they have to re, their, their waste has to be reclaimed and actually put back into the aquifer or some type of recharge.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So question to that, I mean, doesn't that affluent go out to the local water treatment facility in an area? I mean, if you're talking about Maricopa, it's going to the water treatment facility in that town, so it's being recharged. But you're talking about individual ones that are outside of the, of a designation?
I'm just talking about large developments such as large apartment complexes or any large development for that matter. We should be looking at the possibility of, of what it would take to reclaim those waters.
That will require, I think, some statutory requirements. In other words, that, that's going to be something that the legislature is going to have to weigh in on because, and I've said this all along, whatever decisions are made and changes or procedures and policies should apply statewide and should be available to any and all communities with their residential developments, be it rental or even standalones.
Okay. Anyone else? So it may have seemed like we went off topic, but that's kind of what I had in mind when, when I brought this up, is because there are far-reaching effects to anything that we approve, you get asked these questions. So this should give all of us a better idea of how we're voting, and then the people too, on what we're voting on. So I appreciate all of the feedback from everybody.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Presentation of the draft, Pinal County Five-Year Transportation Improvement and Maintenance Program for '22, '23. Tara.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors and County Leadership. I'm Tara Harmon. I'm a senior transportation planner with the Public Works Department, and today I'm pleased to present to you the draft 2023 Pinal County Five-Year Transportation Improvement and Maintenance Program. The program is the county's near-term transportation plan, our guide that identifies the current, upcoming, and following, oh, sorry, our guide that identifies projects in the current, upcoming, and following three budget years. The plan is a snapshot of the status of projects as of February 2023, when the Transportation Advisory Committee recommended the proposed plan for approval by you, the Board of Supervisors. Let me see. There we go. The program's three pillars are the funding, the plan, and the committee. The funding is provided from revenues generated from the half-cent transportation excise tax that was approved by Pinal County voters during a special election in November of 2005. The tax will sunset in 2026, and the public works staff will seek reauthorization of the tax with a special election in 2024. Revenues generated by the tax are to support countywide roadway construction, reconstruction, and maintenance projects. The plan is a listing of transportation projects that are programmed over the five-year period. The plan establishes a tentative schedule of potential funding for completion of the county's transportation planning, construction, and major maintenance projects, and is reviewed and updated annually by the Transportation Advisory Committee. The committee is a 10-member committee of, or panel of citizens appointed by you, the Board of Supervisors, and charged with recommending the five-year plan. The committee meets each September, November, and February to prepare, prepare the recommendation. All meetings are open to the public and in compliance with Arizona's open meeting law, and the committee is governed by the bylaws which were approved by the board in 2010. Let's take a minute and circle back to the funding component, component of the plan. As I mentioned, the plan is funded by the transportation half-cent excise tax, sales tax, sometimes referred to as our pothole tax. Revenues from this tax are distributed to pay for local projects in unincorporated Pinal County, as well as through a population-based formula between the 10 incorporated cities and towns. The tax was originally approved by the county voters as Prop 400 in November of 1986, with a sunrise of January 1987 and a sunset at the end of December of, of, sorry, at the end of December in 2006. In 2005, with anticipation of the upcoming sunset of the tax, Prop 400 once again was placed on the November ballot and was again approved by the Pinal County voters, this time for reauthorization of the half-cent sales tax or the pothole tax. The reauthorization has a sunset of January 2007, I'm sorry, a sunrise of 2007, and a sunset at the end of this, of December of 2026. So in anticipation of the upcoming sunset, the county has taken actions to launch a public awareness effort, which we are calling preserving our future, to highlight the history of transportation in Pinal County, the accomplishments of the current tax, and a look at our future roadway maintenance, safety, and economic development needs. Our goal is to reach out to the Pinal County voters with the continuation of the tax as part of the November 2024 election. The transportation have, excise tax, as you know, is Pinal County's really only reliable funding source for transportation projects. So it's imperative that we are successful with this reauthorization.
Could we interrupt you?
Sure.
Thank you. You know, and I think to what you were, what you're saying here is that I think it's imperative that we actually communicate to our citizens that we've chosen not to use our general funds to do a lot of our maintenance and things. We've, we're using this additional tax. So we're not using our property taxes or anything like that. Those are specific to other items. These, this particular tax is specific to our roads, improvements, and maintenances, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That is the goal of the education component. So the goal would be to educate the citizens that not only are the property taxes not utilized towards roadway projects or anything roadway concern, that also we only receive a limited amount of funding for roadway purposes, one being the HERF, which is the Highway Users' Fund, and one being vehicle licensing tax. Those are predominantly used, those revenues are predominantly used to keep operations running. So as far as projects go. So as far as projects go, this half-cent sales tax is really the only reliable funding source for those.
Thank you.
Moving on, continuing the funding. This chart reflects the revenues collected for the county's portion of the transportation excise tax over the last five years, with the expected total revenue for the remainder of 2223. The collected revenue has increased more than 8.4 million since 2018, 2019. In fiscal year 1819, we collected approximately 878,000 over the projected revenue. In fiscal year 1920, we collected approximately 345,000 over the projected revenue. In fiscal year 1920, we collected approximately, I'm sorry, in fiscal year 2122, we collected approximately 1.48 million over the projected revenue. In fiscal year 2122, we collected approximately 1.99 million, nearly 2 million, over the revenue, or projected revenue. And to finish up fiscal year 2223, we expect again to collect 2 million over what was projected this time last year. We are hopeful that this trend will continue. Let's move on to the program priorities. Yes?
Go ahead.
Back to those revenues. I think that the thing that's not being said there, though, is there's still not enough revenue to do all the transportation projects we need.
Absolutely.
To address.
No.
Even though we're collecting, we're hitting above our projections, we're still, there's a big shortfall in what is needed and where we're at.
A major shortfall.
And I don't know if there's a way to demonstrate that.
Again, that is hopefully one of our goals as far as this education component that we're working on, on preserving our future, to demonstrate that, to explain or to let the public know and the citizens understand that although it might look like we're collecting a lot, so for instance, this year, we're expecting to collect well over 17 million in revenues. However, what it takes to maintain county roadways, existing county roadways, is more than half of that. So how are we supposed to continue with projects and new projects and the influx of growth when we don't even have enough really to maintain what we need to maintain, to bring us up to a C level as far as our roadway conditions go?
And that's my point. I think you had side-by-side that if you had a bar that showed how much you needed this year, even just to maintain, and I know I've gotten on all these discussions before on transportation, it really does show how out of sync we are with the needs, you know, the revenues versus the needs.
The revenues versus the needs. And that's all part of the plan for the preserving our future. I do, I-
Whoever's doing the plan, I hope they're listening.
Yes. We are. We're listening and we're understanding. This has been a big challenge, and it's something that we're working really hard on because I think that the education of the citizens is imperative.
It is.
It really is. A lot of folks do not understand how roadways are maintained and how they are constructed and what it takes to construct them or maintain them. So this is something we're working really hard on. I do want to stick to the presentation, if possible, because I'm here to present the plan for this year, not the preserving our future. But we will, in the future, come to you with that. Let's move on to our program priorities. The goals or priorities of our transportation program involve roadway maintenance, traffic flow, paved mileage, and economic development. In the past few years, our primary focus has trended towards maintenance of our paved roads. Although roadway safety continues to be a huge focus as well, we do need to make sure that our existing roadways are maintained. Due to several county widening projects, traffic flow is improving but will need to be managed throughout the entire county as areas continue to develop. To address air quality mandates, paved mileage must increase on unimproved roadways that have average daily traffic count of 150 vehicles or greater. The county's elected leadership has made economic development a strategic priority, so we consider projects that support economic development. Because as you know, movement of people and goods is one of the determining factors when it comes to attracting new businesses and creating quality jobs. New projects. The plan is a dynamic document with two moving parts, one being the new projects. The new projects are typically added annually to the fifth year of the plan. Transportation projects requests are accepted annually. These requests can be submitted by anyone and accepted via mail, email, or online submittal. Those projects' requests submitted on or before September 30th of each year will be considered for inclusion in the fifth year of the program for the upcoming budget year. If the request is submitted after September 30th, it will be considered for the next budget year. So what happens after a request has been submitted? Once a request has been submitted, it is reviewed by the appropriate district manager or area manager for eligibility. Eligibility is then determined by criteria such as average daily traffic, maintenance, right-of-way status, drainage, or utility conflicts. If the project is eligible, it is then reviewed by Public Works leadership and given a score from zero to three in nine different categories. A few examples of categories are project connectivity, reduced safety risk, environmental compliance, and county maintenance cost reduction. A cost to construct or complete is then determined by county leadership and the area managers for each eligible project. Finally, all eligible and scored projects are then presented to the Transportation Advisory Committee, and the committee is then tasked with prioritizing projects with one being the highest of priority. The committee considers factors such as the district manager and public work leadership reviews and rankings, and the project details and public input when it comes to their rankings. The top priority projects, which fit within the proposed budget, are then recommended to include in the fifth year of the plan. So let's take a look at this year's fifth year of the plan. This year, the committee is recommending 12 new projects for budget year 2627, totaling $6.88 million, and two continued projects totaling 8.12 million. These projects include four rehabilitation or maintenance projects, three safety projects, six paving or ARDP, which is asphalt-rock-dust palliative, and one design project. This will give us two projects within Supervisory District 1, one project within Supervisory District 2, four projects within Supervisory District 4, four projects within Supervisory District 5, and two projects that would be programmed countywide. The second part of the plan are the amendments or the updates made to the plan. Amendments are changes to the existing projects already programmed in the approved plan. This planning cycle, the committee is recommending a total of 109 amendments to the plan. Those 109 updates include 13 projects that have been added, advanced, or advanced to a new budget year or rolled to a new budget year. So for example, if there was a project that we are currently working on but it's not going to be completed this year, we might then roll it to the following budget year. Or if there was a project of higher importance, we might then choose to roll it to be constructed sooner than it had originally been programmed. There are 39 changes to project activity scheduling or costs. So activity projects would include things such as pre-construction to construction or a drainage project from design to drainage. There are 57 projects with a status change. And of that, what that means is we have now moved from program to pending or from pending to underway or from underway to completed, which we really like. And of those 57 status changes, we did move 16 projects to completed. So now let's take a look at the overall.
Hold on. Give a question from-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you make these amendments or this reschedule or whatever, does the TAC board hear about this? Or is that brought into a discussion, a meeting with them?
It is brought into a discussion at the meeting in February.
Okay.
Which I was going to ask too, is how much influence does our advisory council actually have on these projects? And because it just happens that today we're thanking and honoring them for all their contributions. So what exactly is their role?
That's a great question, Mr. Chairman. So their role is, a lot of times, the amendments are brought to the TAC by staff since our area managers or our project managers are the ones that are out there in the field, seeing how the projects are going, understanding what's going on and knowing if we have to roll it, if we need to add some money to the project, whatnot. So then those amendments are suggested by the, by staff. Then it is brought to the committee at the February meeting. At that time, the committee does have the opportunity to make discussions, to have discussion and make any recommendations on those amendments.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on, this slide shows a snapshot of the 2023 temp by budget year. So in 2023, we had 18 projects. 2023, I'm sorry. In 2223, we have 18 projects scheduled with a total of 13.5 million. 2324, we have 24 projects with a total of 28 million. In budget year 2425, we have 14 projects with a total of 17 million. In budget year 2526, we have 23 projects scheduled with a total of 11 million. And in budget year 2627, as you just learned, we have 14 projects and a total of 15 million. I'd like to back up to budget year 2324. This is a great example of where we might roll projects. So it looks like we have a lot of projects there and a lot of money. But a lot of those projects are projects that might not necessarily be completed in 2223. So therefore, those funds and those projects have been rolled to the following budget year to be completed. So moving on to our plan approval.
Since it's a work question, just everybody feel free to just insert yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go back to the slide, previous slide. So it's the percentage, in other words, you're only going to do 4 million for improvements, you're going to do 9 million for maintenance. The next year, you got 22 million for improvements, but only 5 million for maintenance. It fluctuates a lot. And I mean, how do you, I mean, I guess, how do you discern? What's more important? Is it improvements or is it maintenance? Who makes that decision? And how do you arrive at that? To me, it would seem like it would be more of a little constant, but-
Well, exactly. Thank you, Supervisor Miller. As I stated earlier, we're trending more towards maintenance because now we have all these paved roadways, and now we need to focus on maintaining them. However, this is a little earlier in the plan where the trend wasn't necessarily towards maintenance, and we've had some projects that have been rolled and rolled and rolled. And now we have accumulated what seems like a lot in improvements. But I did want to point out, I do want to point out that that number, it is big, but it's a couple of years' worth of improvement projects.
Okay.
Now, who does discern that? It goes both ways between the committee and staff. You know, staff are the folks who do recommend these projects to the committee. The committee then does recommend them to you. The last few years, we have had major discussions within the committee, and we have collectively decided to focus more on the maintenance side.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
We'll move on to plan approval. Starting Monday on the 24th, our Public Works, Public Information Officer Ray Teas will issue a press release announcing the 30-day public comment period for the draft 2023 plan. The 30-day period will continue through May 23rd. And a digital copy of the draft plan and an online comment form will be available to view, complete, and submit on the Public Works Planning webpage. After all comments have been addressed, I will come back and request final approval for the plan at the June 7 regular meeting. And I'd like to take a minute to point out when I said the digital copy of the draft and plan will be available online, I also have provided the clerk of the board with hard copies to distribute to each of you.
I'm looking at 2022, we're in 2023.
Oh, my goodness. I apologize.
Yeah, we're a little bit late on this.
We are a little bit late on this. We are. 2022, we will come to you at June 7 of 2023 for final approval.
Yeah. That's right. And just one other thing, just to make sure, clarification here. This is actually a half-a-cent tax on gas?
No.
This is a sales tax?
This is, yes, Supervisor Goodman. This is a sales tax. This is a half-cent-
I feel like you're my mom grabbing me by the face. Looking me in the eye.
Excellent sales tax.
Okay. Supervisor Goodman. Okay, I get it.
Yes. So it is a half-cent excise sales tax. So it's for all goods purchased within Penale County.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I'd like to take a minute to talk about our committee. This year, our committee evaluated 12 new projects and two continued projects, recommending all 14 for this year's plan. As you know, the committee members are appointed by you to represent each supervisory district for a four-year term. Our current committee just finished up their second year of the four-year term that they will serve. We have Mr. David Garcia and Mr. Mark Seidel appointed by Supervisor Kavanaugh to represent District 1, Shelby Moody and Steve Johnson appointed by Supervisor Goodman to represent District 2. We have Kevin Lewis and Rusty Riggs appointed by Supervisor Miller to represent District 3. We have Ted Hawkins and Sharon Beckman appointed by Vice Chair McClure to represent District 4. And finally, we have Maxine Brown and Lisa Bradford appointed by Chairman Surti to represent District 5. And I'd like to take a quick pause here and recognize that we do have one of our members in attendance today. We have Ms. Lisa Bradford attending our meeting today. So we might just take a quick minute to thank her for her commitment to our committee. Would you like to stand up? Give a little wave? Our committee meeting schedule. In February of this year, the committee approved the meeting schedule for the upcoming 2024, or 2024 planning cycle. All meetings are held on Tuesdays in Florence at 2:30 p.m. and are scheduled for September 19, 2023, November 28, 2023, and February 20, 2024. Most of the September meeting will consist of open meeting law and program review. The November meeting is when the committee will review and evaluate eligible project requests and project amendments. And the February meeting will be the committee high point with the plan recommendation and election of officers for the next planning cycle. Before we wrap up, I'd like to remind everyone that the county's website, in particular, the Public Works Transportation Planning page, is a great resource for current information on the transportation program. The current five-year plan and the draft plan is available to view in print. Transportation project requests can be submitted through the website, and the TAC meeting agendas, minutes, and project status reports minutes, and project status reports are all available on the webpage. So, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, unless you have questions, this wraps up our presentation today.
It's pretty early. Does anyone have any questions? It looks like no.
No.
I mean, we could possibly tie in other, other potential tax initiatives on the ballot that would do other things that are not these projects, there's other projects altogether, right? So the public might, could, can confuse the two with the whole 469 that did not pass. It's nothing to do with these projects, it's a whole different set, so maybe take some time to explain that that.
Yes.
Would have done a whole different set.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Surti. Prop 469, which did fail, the vote this past November, was not associated with this half-cent sales tax at all. It was a half-cent sales tax that I believe was approved by voters in 2017, however, had been tied up in litigation. The ultimate outcome of the litigation was not in our favor for that tax, so the reauthorization or the, the tax came back to vote in 2017. That is associated with the Penale transporta, oh, sorry. I lost my train of thought. That is associated, that is a completely different tax associated with the. Yes, the Penale Regional Transportation Authority. Thank you. I'm focused on TAC today, temp. That was. Right? We don't mix taxes here. So that was completely different. It was associated with the Penale Regional Transportation Authority. Nothing to do with the Transportation Improvement and Maintenance Program or the half-cent pothole tax.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know, this may be too simple of a question, but do we ever, ever have the, an opportunity, like we're planning to do something, and then there's some economic development that comes along, and they say, we'll pay for part of this if you do this? I mean, that shifts money that we didn't have to spend here to another project. Is that true?
That is true. That is true. We do, we do have that opportunity at times. There's also times where there's opportunity to partner in economic development endeavors where they might need something, and we're going to partner, provide, provide some sort of an improvement to entice that. So then sometimes some of these funds are utilized for that as well.
And I, and I, I know they have in the past, but the cities and towns sometimes will partner with us.
Yes.
It's a, a joint venture in a scenario that's a corridor that'll benefit both of us. So there's always those opportunities that come down.
There are those opportunities.
That might not have been on the radar screen right at first, but as we go through the, the year, things can change.
Absolutely.
Okay. With that, I think we've.
Can I just, I would like to make, mention of one more thing that I failed to mention before. As I stated earlier, you have been provided a hard copy of the plan, the draft plan for this year, and it is available online. However, I did want to point out that you might notice it looks a little different than it has in years past. We've kind of redesigned it, and I really want to give a lot of credit to Emily LaSala. She is in our Public Works Department. She's a GIS analyst for us, and she was very instrumental in creating this new look. She was great. She helped me tremendously, and I just really wanted to take a minute to give her some credit.
So shout out to Emily?
Yes. Yay, Emily!
Okay. If nothing else, then we will be adjourned.